Everybody, 6:02 PM, I'll call this meeting to order. Thanks for being with us. If you could please stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rory, if you would call roll, please.
Yes. Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Billings.
Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Robinson.
Here.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, we'll move into public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time by stepping to the microphone, saying their name for the record. Go ahead. Just please give us your first and last name.
Thank you. My name is Mike Hall. This is the first time I've ever addressed a city council in any form, so please try and bear with me. I am a resident here in Midvale. I've lived here for 23 years. I come this evening wanting to address a policy issue at the Midvale City Cemetery. Twenty-one, to give you some background, 21 years ago, my wife passed away, and I buried her in the cemetery. At that time, I checked about regulations as far as a marker. One of the things I wanted to do was put a base underneath the marker that provided for the, a small planting, it had a cutout in it for a small planting. I wanted to plant a miniature rose, a tiny rose, in it. Okay, I did that. I've maintained that for the last 21 years. When I visited the cemetery last Sunday afternoon, it had been cut down level with the concrete base that it sits in. I contacted the city Monday morning, asked about it, thought possibly a mistake or something had been made. I was first, the first lady was very cordial, very nice. She says, I don't know, there's been some rule changes. She forwarded me to a different gentleman. He told me that the policy has always been that there has never been any plantings allowed in the cemetery. So, this has been here for 21 years. I've maintained it. Isn't there some grandfathering or something that's allowed? And he told me, no. He asked me if I had documentations on what I was told 21 years ago. I didn't save anything like that. I didn't, I, I was grief, I, just verbal, okay? My appeal to you tonight is if there's no, isn't any grandfathering for something that's small, contained within the boundaries of the base, okay, not allowed to grow past that, if there's no grandfathering, would you consider amending that rule to allow for something like that? That's my request, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
May I ask, once you reach a decision, how would I obtain that information?
What we'll do is, when you're done, and I assume no one's gonna come up, I'll follow you out, we'll talk for a second on just.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Thanks, Mike. All right, do we have any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move into reports. Matt, do you just want me to skip you if we?
I've covered the items.
Yeah, okay, okay. For me, just two quick things, just a reminder to everybody that the Midvale Family Resource Center is now the Connie Crosby Family Resource Center. They named the, our family shelter after Connie Crosby, a longtime advocate for homeless youth and worked for Canyon School District for many years as the homeless liaison. It was great to honor her, and it's just gonna take some getting used to, to remember that that's, to change the name as, as we talk about it, but just know that that name has officially changed. And then just wanted to thank everybody for their participation in Harvest Days, PD, Fire, all the staff here, our community members that really stepped up, lots and lots of work on that, and luckily, the weather mostly held out for us, even though it did rain the entire time during fireworks, but, but just really appreciate everybody's work on that. That's all I've got. Moving to council reports. Councilmember Billings.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Glover.
I just wanna thank everybody for Harvest Days, good block parties, and good, all the way through, everything worked really well, I think. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just sort of echo what Councilmember Glover said about block parties. Interestingly, my district always has the most, and we had new ones in my district again, so, you know, I always feel like I'm running around like crazy trying to catch them all, but they all seem very appreciative of, of multiple, you know, facets of, of the city coming, whether it's, you know, fire or police, they love having them there, and even like accounting or whatever, they're like, this is great, you know, because they feel like they can talk, you know, and not always just voice their concerns, but their appreciations, and, you know, everything I got was they were glad, you know, it was a good turnout. The, the one thing that's come from it, and I've kind of mentioned it beforehand, is, you know, I think we need to sort of look at our policy around the way, you know, halfway homes are in our residential areas. You know, some cities in, in Utah just ban them. I don't know if that's, would hold up in court, you know, the way that they sort of write them. But I do think we need to look at some reasonableness, right? We, when you have a, a home where you have six or seven people hop out of a, you know, a van with, you know, anklets on them, and, and none of the residents around them know, and they all have kids, you know, now, now, most of them feel like they can't have their kids go out front or out back because they don't know, they don't know, right? Are these criminals? Are these whatever? And, and I think, you know, one of my bigger fears is, we, we should probably be able to make some reasonableness around distance from schools, like, this particular one is within a half mile of four schools, and, and two of them are the most populated in Utah. Like, I think Midvale Elementary, Midvale Middle are essentially the, the most populated in elementary, mid, middle school, or, you know, in the top five, right? Unlike other schools that are, you know, school districts losing schools, we have, you know, a very healthy population, and, and having sort of this halfway home where these people that, you know, have a right to live and whatnot, and I, and I'm not here to, to get into that, but, you know, when no one in the community knows what's going on in that scenario, I don't, I don't know if it's great for us, and I think we need to find a way to, you know, there's gotta be something sort of in the middle, right, where we can, you know, make, make the areas feel safe, whether that's through more communication, but, you know, just from the schools alone, that's what sort of worries me, and that kind of came out, was a little bit of a dark cloud at, at some of the block parties, because multiple areas are worried about it, and, you know, I'm not here to point fingers at what the house, where the houses or whatnot, because it's a more of a broader topic I'd like to maybe discuss, and, and I know it'll take time, right, it's not something you can make, you know, a policy, policy decision, or if people agree, maybe other people have ideas, but I, I do think, you know, just saying, you know, it's essentially a commercial in a business, operating out of a home, and we can regulate all sorts of different versions of that, and we need to find a way to, you know, make those citizens feel like, you know, they're welcome and invited, you know, the ones that already live there, because now some of them feel like they can't, their kids can't use their yards, and I don't think that's fair. And, you know, other than that, most of the, most of the feedback was really positive and really good, and, you know, I'm glad that, you know, we have a staff that works tirelessly on these things. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor. Also wanted to just remark how great of a success Harvest Days was, had a great time, as everyone else did. I always say the most nerve-wracking part about being an elected official is calling bingo. Some of those folks really take that game seriously, and I just always hope not to make a mistake, because they will let you know, but it was a very good event. Bingo was fun, as always, as well. I did want to just follow up on Mr. Hall, who made a public comment earlier here tonight. If we need a council member in support of putting that policy on our future agenda item, I certainly think we should look at that. It was kind of a brief story he told, but it was pretty heartbreaking to have that for 21 years and then see it cut back, so I think maybe we can look at that policy, hopefully make an exception for live plants that are well-maintained. I know sometimes fake plants get put into cemeteries and they blow here and there, so I do see some merit to having a policy against that, but, you know, live, well-maintained plants, especially ones that are clearly decades old, I think we might be able to make an exception for that, so I would be interested in getting that policy update on, not the next council meeting, but a future council meeting, so if someone can let Matt know that, since he's, and he's disposed right now. But, anyway, finally, I wanted to say, as we get into our truth in taxation meeting here tonight, I say this every year, because it looks, we go through it pretty quickly, and I don't want people who might be tuning in to think that we haven't talked about this, you know, for hours at this point, so this meeting always seems a little rushed, and, and it's great that, you know, that no one's here to complain too much, but also, I wanted to just point out the fact that we've done such a great job of mitigating how much people's taxes are gonna be increased, so, you know, a little bit of an increase is not welcome news for a lot of people, but, you know, when it goes to fund police and fire and, and things like that, I think most of our residents can live with that, and I just wanted to thank Mariah and her team, and, and everyone here at the city who's done such a great job of mitigating the damage, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. City matter at all? Good? Came back just in time.
The only thing I guess I would say is, I don't know if you heard Glenn talk about it, but I guess the lightning hit a power pole in front of Public Works, and a chunk of the city is without power, so Glenn is working on dealing with that.
Everyone's okay, everyone's?
He didn't say anything otherwise, so I'm assuming that that's the case.
I'll text him.
Okay. All right, I'll move into the next item, which is our public hearing to consider setting the rate of tax for calendar year 2024 and levying taxes upon all real and personal property within the corporate boundaries of Midvale City. Mariah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to present the budget and the property tax increase combined, since they have so much to do with each other, so one presentation for all the fun stuff tonight. Here is our budget timeline, like Dustin was talking about, of what we have done so far this year. I'm grateful to be done with the budget. It feels like I've been working on it for eight months, because I have been, so, we had our budget and strategy workshop with you guys on March 28th, taking your direction from there. We created a tentative budget, which you adopted on May 7th. We held a public hearing on that tentative budget on May 21st. On June 18th, you voted to move us into the truth in taxation process, which leads us to here tonight, where we will hopefully adopt a tax rate and a final budget for fiscal year 2025. The general fund this year has total revenues and expenditures of just over, just under $31 million, which is just over 11% increase from our amended fiscal year 24 budget. We have projected new ongoing funds of just under $2 million, but do note that 1.5 million of that is from our homeless mitigation funding, and then we have a proposed used-to-fund balance of just under $3.3 million.
Mariah, what's fund balance?
Fund balance is, like our savings account, so anytime we have revenues over expenditures at the end of the year, that goes into a savings account of the city. Ours is sitting about 35% of our general fund budget right now. We have $8 million of unrestricted fund balance, which we can assign in future year budgets.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, for our general fund revenues, we, taxes make up $18.2 million of that. Licenses and permits is $710,000. That's red because that's a decrease from previous years. Our intergovernmental revenue is $5.37 million, charges for services, $2.3 million, fines and forfeitures, which is also red because it's a decrease from previous years, fines and forfeitures, $885,000, and then miscellaneous revenue of $214,000 with a use of fund balance of $3.3 million. Here are our changes since the tentative budget to our revenues. We have a decrease in taxes, because the tentative budget included a much higher property tax increase than we ended up needing, as we sorted through and got more actuals and things throughout the previous months, and our intergovernmental revenue saw a pretty, excuse me, large increase of 1.5. This is, the tentative budget had just what we knew about what we were gonna get for the homeless mitigation funding. At this point, all of that has been solidified with the state, and so that has actuals included in here. For our tax revenue, sales tax makes up 60% of our, our revenues in the sales tax section. That's $11.4 million. This is a 1% increase from our fiscal year 2023 actuals. Our property taxes is $3.46 million, so that includes a 12% property taxes. This is less than what was on our noticing. Again, we've gotten more information since you voted to go into truth in taxation, so our notices are about 15%. We've decreased that, hoping to generate $376,000 in new property tax revenue. This is about $26 for the 2024 average household in Midvale annually. Our franchise tax has increased $250,000. This is just reflecting actuals, and all those other taxes are $800,000. All of those I just went through and looked at prior months and years and projected to what I believe we'll collect. All right, a sales tax overview is, you pay about 7.25%, not about, 7.25% sales tax in Midvale City when you purchase anything of that Midvale City, or 1% of that is the local sales tax, so for every dollar, you pay a penny. Of that penny, half of it comes directly to Midvale, because you purchased something here. The other half goes to the state, and then is distributed throughout the cities in the state based on the population of the state that you make up. Our sales tax are distributed to the city monthly by the Utah State Tax Commission. There's a two-month delay in distribution while they collect all those sales tax, so in May, we get the distribution from March sales. This is our most susceptible tax to economic trends. As you can see, we had some really high growth in previous years, post-COVID years. We saw large sales tax increases, because people were spending a lot of money. We're seeing some slowing in that now, and our projection for fiscal year 2025 is over 1% over fiscal year 23, and right in line with 2024, is what we're seeing, though we still have a month left to collect because of that delay, and like I said, a 1% increase from fiscal year 23. For property taxes, this is the totality of what somebody would see in 2023 on their Midvale, on our property tax in a property in Midvale, so it's about $3,600. Of that, only 6% is paid to Midvale, about $215 last year. It's hard, it's hard to find data while people are going through truth and taxation, but I just wanted to point out that Midvale City is only a really small portion of the overall property tax that people pay. And then, just another comparison, these are all the cities in the county, and Midvale, as of 2023, was the third lowest with the proposed increase. It does move us up to the fourth, but really, relative to the rest of the city, or the rest of the county, our property taxes are, are fairly low. How property taxes work is that, in the state of Utah, the state takes a previous year property tax revenue plus any new growth that occurred in your city, and they divide that by the total assessed property tax value. This gives you the certified tax rate, which we'll go into what ours is in a second, but when assessed values go up, tax rate goes down, and when assessed values go down, tax rates go up. So this, this tax rate changes every year, but the city doesn't actually have control of that if they just accept the certified tax rate every year. Another thing to note is, if it's a residential property, then that's only, the property tax is only based on 55% of the property tax value, and then if you wish to have additional revenue, you go through a process called truth and taxation, which is where we're at right now. So for Midvale for 2024 tax year, the total taxable value is about $3.6 billion. We didn't have any new growth. This is some weird stuff with the way the RDAs grew, independent of the city and how that all worked out. The average, average Midvale residential value is $470,000. That's a 7.2% increase from last year, and so that makes the taxable residential value $258,500. So with all that, the certified tax rate for Midvale would have had our property tax decrease, but it would generate the same amount of revenue for the city, so the certified tax rate, the, the state calculator is .000847, which would have generated just over $3 million in property tax revenue for the city, which is what we had in 2024, and was about $218,000, or $218 on the average residential property. What we're proposing is .000948, which would generate just under $3.5 million in property tax revenue, have the average residential taxes at $245, again, a 26% increase, and it's just under 11% increase from the certified tax rate. Do you guys have any questions on that?
So you have zero growth. How is that?
Yeah, so that came back, it was this really weird thing where originally, I'll, I'll tell you this, I will not pretend to understand that I understand how the state does their math. I do have it on my to-do list to follow up with them, but essentially, they were saying that because the RDA, their way they handle their tax increment, and because the way the growth that happened in the RDAs was greater than any other growth that happened throughout the city, that that, like, ate up our new growth. If you, I-
That does not make any sense whatsoever.
I tend to agree with you, but I did call and talk to them about it, because when they put out our original estimates, they did have, like, I don't know, we are, we would have generated like 16,000 new dollars in property tax.
There is new buildings being built, not just in the RDA.
Right, and so their, their explanation was the RDA, like, it ate any other growth, but I don't, again, I haven't had time yet, but it is my intention, because I don't understand their math.
And even in the RDA, we're supposed to get a little bit of that, right?
Yes, the RDA refunds, they, they pay the city back those taxes, and it's-
Well, no, the, I, I can't remember, different RDA, if, different areas are a different amount.
Yes.
But it's like, we're supposed to get like 10% of-
We do.
So there's gotta be growth in that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I didn't have time to dig into the way the state does their calculations. I just had to do ours, but it is my intention to triumphally understand it, because the, maybe Matt has more insight.
Well, just about the portion that you're talking about, so, most of our project area, the Bingham Junction and Jordan Bluffs are 80% project areas, where we retain 20% of our portion of what we receive, and so we do get that.
We do.
But the-
The city gets it, or the RDA gets it?
The city gets it.
The city gets it, yeah.
Yeah.
So there should be new growth somewhere.
Right, but we're not, sorry.
And then, I mean, there's other buildings being built during this last year.
Isn't the point that the, the RDA growth is alleviating some of the, the tax burden, and that's, I think that's the point of that number, is that because the RDA is generating revenue that is then being reimbursed to the city, then, you know, it, it doesn't make sense, you know, to see there's no growth value, but I think that's what it's trying to say, is that, you know, the city is benefiting from the RDA in a way that doesn't make sense to lower taxes even more based on that number. The taxes are already being lowered by revenue that's being generated from the RDA and those RDA areas.
Honestly, all this makes my brain want to explode a little bit when I try and think about it too hard, because I don't, like, it's, what the property taxes we collect out of the RDAs is built into what is projected in our property tax here, this, and so, I, I, but I don't, I let Cody do a lot of that.
I just don't understand how we have no growth.
I will get an explanation for you, because when I, I went back, I did it all with the $16,000 of new growth, and then I went back to double-check it when I brought one of the budgets before you, and I was like, what, where did their, where did our money go? And so I called the state tax commission, and this is what they explained to me, but then Nate was like, really, you're gonna have to, like, go meet with them to try and understand how they get what they get, because it's not straightforward.
The way I look at it, if somebody builds a duplex on a piece of property that is all land, that's new growth, and we should get it. Even if it's just one duplex in the whole city, we should get growth on that. That, to me, that makes sense now.
There is a piece where, like, because we're looking at a taxable value of $3.6 billion, say that generates a new property tax value of $200,000, that wouldn't actually end up as any sense in our pocket, essentially, so there is that, but the scale of it also-
It could be new growth of 10 bucks or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and this is a thing that-
I, I just don't understand.
No, well, no, and you're, you're right to not understand, because-
Because I've asked Matt and Nate too, I was like, what is this, I mean, what does this mean?
We basically go to the tax commission, it used to be when I was on the Utah Redevelopment Association, we would go every three or four years to go and get explanations on some of this, because there's been different factors that play into the new growth, whether it's centrally assessed, personal property or real property, and they've moved around what plays into that through different legislation at, at different times. Everything you're saying makes sense, but it's also this thing of, like, appreciation isn't new growth, but if someone clears a site of a building and removes that value, and then we build a duplex, I'm not saying it balances, but those are all these factors that they're playing into it, and we've also had these situations too, where, there was a situation when I was in Salt Lake City, where there was a building that sold, and it said, in the newspaper article downtown, that the building sold for $180 million, and then the assessor came in, assessed that building at, it was something like $90 million, and we went in and said to the county, which I know is separate, and said, there's a newspaper article that said that the market value of this is the $180 million, and they're like, oh, there's a lot of factors. My point of all this is, the value that you think should be assessed to buildings doesn't actually get assessed to those buildings, and the state's formulas for how new growth is calculated is a mind-bending thing. It changes on a regular basis based on legislation, and Mariah is now doing the new, going to meet them on the hill to help them try to understand where we're at at this current one, but what you're saying does make sense.
Like also-
Until you think about legislation.
And also, like, just even that taxable value number, that's nice. They can give it to us down to the dollar, but also, when you, they try to show you how that's calculated, it's like an Excel spreadsheet of like nine, they're looking at that. I, I will try my best to understand it in the coming month or so. I, I will try my best to understand it in the coming month, uh, or so, uh, I haven't had time up to this point. Governmenty.
Governmenty.
Yeah, definitely.
This is, this is the seed of all governmenty, yes.
Thank you.
No, you're totally fine, because, because honestly it left me, I, I wrote that because that was their explanation and with every intention to understand more. Because it felt weird to me too, Paul.
Mariah, it is safe to say though, for anyone who might be listening or watching later, that, um, I just wanted to make this clear. That RDA growth is city growth because it, these are projects that exist within Midvale City, so.
And we are, we are having growth. It is, well, apparently, according to them, the bulk of it is happening.
I just want people to know that, you know, it's not accurate to say that there's been no growth in Midvale over the last fiscal year. There's been lots of it and, and it's just, whatever the tax commission wants to say, more of it has re, occurred in RDA areas than the rest of the city.
I think that is definitely for sure a true statement. How they, they math it, don't know, but yes, I think that's definitely true. Okay, um, just-
One last thing on that. Going back to my thing of talking about URA, going and looking at this, that's because it's, it is op, it is opaque to all cities. And is a common thing for all cities to try to get the opaqueness removed. And so I don't want anyone also listening to think that this is a Midvale issue, it is an issue that's affecting everyone.
Yeah, I don't generally just like accept numbers and not understand where they come from. That's like not my job, so.
That's good.
Yeah. All right, and then the truth and taxation process has a lot of pieces that are required in it. So on, on or before June twenty second, the city had to adopt either the certified tax rate or to go into truth and taxation. And that's what you guys did on June eighteenth. Um, we followed all the notices, um, for public here of noticing of the property tax increase and in public hearings. We were in a combined notice for all, uh, entities in Salt Lake County, County proposing raising property taxes. That was in the Deseret News on July twenty sixth and August second, and the Salt Lake Tribune on July twenty first and July twenty eighth. And then, um, we noticed our own in Salt Lake Tribune on August eleventh, and that is in excess of what is required. Um, and then, uh, we also had ads placed on multiple websites, public notice websites, all of those things. Um, and then our public hearing agenda could only address the tax increase budget and related things like the pay plan, which is true tonight. And then, um, we have to hold a public hearing, which we'll do following this presentation, which is tonight at six P M. Um, okay, for the expenditures in the general fund, these are, are the, the major expenditures. We've talked about this before, but knowing we were having big public safety increase, all departments worked, um, pretty tirelessly to make sure anywhere they could cut funds, they did. That we were being slim wherever we could, but also making sure we could maintain the service levels that the city provides. So our public safety increase was one point eight five million dollars. This includes UPD, UFA, and our animal control contract. We have, uh, salary and benefit increases in the general fund of about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we have IT equipment increased needs. Uh, we have put in a new, this is a change from the tentative budget with our homeless mitigation funding, uh, business and property improvement program for two hundred thousand. We have insurance increases, a city hall art program, communication software and other general software, event software. Um, overall operating increases across all budget, all departments in the general fund was only forty two thousand dollars. Um, we have a building official and a plan review FTE, um, included in this budget. That also includes a reduction in our current contract. We have grants of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, we increased our landscaping contract, that's a part of the mitigation funding as well. Um, we've got public works radios, our renewable energy program, outside legal counsel harvest days and, uh, transfer to capital projects funds of three point three five million. That's mainly, um, the, uh, public works building to help fund that. And then across departments, we also cut thirty five thousand dollars. That's where, you know, we did what, what we could. Um, here are the changes sensitivity, the tentative budget broken down by departments. I'm not gonna run through that. It's also in the budget book like that. Um, all right, in the general fund, we have our general government, which includes all of those departments. Uh, sorry, I put those over the pie chart there, thought it says employee services. Um, the total budget for general government is about four million dollars. This makes up about thirteen percent of the general fund. This increased overall of five point four percent from the fiscal year twenty twenty four amended budget. This includes salary and benefit increases, new communication software, renewable energy program, city hall art program, program and the business and property improvement program. Um, our public safety makes up over forty five percent of the general fund budget, just over fourteen million. This is an increase of fourteen point three percent from last year. Um, notable is that it's fifteen percent increase for the UPD contract, about one point seven million dollars. And we did see a sixty four thousand dollar increase in our animal control contract. Uh, administrative services, which is justice court, IT, finance and, uh, the administration of that is two point six million dollars. This makes up eight point five percent of the general fund, had a one percent increase from last year. Has salary and benefit increases, existing software, um, cost increases and the new event software. For public works that comes out of the general funds, three, three point three million dollars, about ten point eight percent of the general fund. This is an increase of three point five percent. This includes salary and benefit increases, um, public works radios and minor, minor operating increases. Um, in community development in the general fund, one point six million dollars makes up about five point four percent of general fund. This had no increase or decrease from last year, has salary and benefit increases. And then the, the building official and planner view, like I mentioned previously. Our debt service fund has a total budget of one point seven million dollars. These are just our required, um, payments on loans and, uh, bonds. Our capital projects fund is just over twenty eight and a half million dollars. Um, this looks similar to what you've seen before. The only change is with the homeless mitigation funding, we had an increased transfer from the general fund, um, to fund rail underpass improvements in the city, in the specific area. I'm not exactly sure, Center Street, I think, is the main one. Um, and then an increase in our facility maintenance of thirty five thousand dollars. Uh, the main, um, the main expenditure in this is our public works facility, which will be paid for out of the capital projects fund. As well as, um, street infrastructure, stag, stag street infrastructure and some money going towards the Center Street project as well for about eight million dollars. Okay, these are, uh, I just wanted to place these in here, though the, most of the enterprise funds had no really notable changes since the tentative budget. They all had some benefit increases when we got actual numbers. And then vehicle operating, um, cost decreased because we had a change in our insurance. The streetlight fund did have, uh, the addition of a cost for the streetlight master plan, which we had spoken with you guys about previously. Um, and then in the internal service funds, the fleet fund, like I said, that's where the insurance costs decreased. And then the IT fund has, um, an additional, uh, eighteen thousand dollars for one time implementation of some new GIS software that is already budgeted for. Um, so the water fund, we have total revenues of seven point eight million dollars. This is a decrease of about forty eight percent. This, both the water and sewer fund are on five year comprehensive financial sustainability plans. We bonded in fiscal year, um, twenty four, that's why you'll see significant decreases in the revenues and expenditures. Um, the expenditures in the water fund is eleven point three seven, this is a decrease of twenty two percent. Um, this isn't this equal, uh, this is an equal decrease to the revenues because we are transferring four million dollars of ARPA funds from the water fund into, uh, the capital projects fund to pay for the facility. Otherwise, we have salary and benefit increases, operating cost increases. We had, um, uh, changes to our Jordan Valley Water contract that it was a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars and then scheduled capital projects of one point three million. And the sewer fund, like I said, also on a CFSB and bonded there about, just about four million dollars, a decrease of twenty five percent. And their expenditures are three point seven million, a decrease of thirty percent. This has also salary and benefit increases, operating cost increases. Our, uh, contracts with South Valley Water, um, reclaim, reclamation increased by a hundred and forty five. And we have scheduled capital projects of two hundred and ninety four thousand. The stormwater fund is down four percent, this is about two point three million dollar budget. Um, we have a stormwater master plan and rate study currently underway. You guys adopted a four percent increase in the stormwater fee, um, previously to help fund. We, we assume the fee will increase more than that, but to do it incrementally, this was a good way before the plan, the rate study was done. And this includes salary and benefit increases of thirty five thousand. The street lighting fund is two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, this is a twenty eight percent increase. The streetlight, uh, fund had a bond that matured in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Um, and so having paid that off, we now have room to kind of look at what a master plan or capital improvements and a rate study in the street lighting fund would look like. So we are, you guys voted to keep the streetlight fee at three dollars, um, this year while we, we fund and look at that plan. And then we'll make a decision moving forward after we have that study back. Um, the sanitation fund has a budget of one point six, six million, this is an increase of seven point two percent. Um, we, we, you voted on a four percent increase to our sanitation rates. This is mainly because our contracts increased, um, with ACE, and so we needed to fund that. Um, our telecommunications fund is just under a million dollars, uh, has a two percent increase. This basically just pays our Utopia pledge payments. Um, the fleet fund is just over two million dollars, this is a two percent increase. Notable requests are, uh, we have increase in cap, in operating costs and then also a decrease in insurance that kind of offset each other. And then we have one point four million dollars in vehicle and equipment replacement budgeted this year. Uh, the IT fund has an increase of a hundred and forty percent. I showed this to our IT director and he was like, whoa, 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 that makes me look really bad compared to the rest of the city. But it's mainly because there's a lot of one time purchases coming out there. We have the community development software that we've saved and budgeted for over the last couple of years, some new copiers, uh, one time requests for software implementation and things like that. They, they aren't really going crazy, I promise. Any questions or comments? Okay, I failed to put my motion, sample motions, I'm, I apologize.
That's okay. Um, one, I should have brought this up before. I know one of your last presentations, Paul had brought up that on the public safety piece, we, uh, list UFA there because of the emergency management contract. I'm gonna say this now in hopes that I can remember this-
Okay.
Like six months from now, is maybe we just call that emergency management and then that'll clarify that it's not.
I will go change it right now, yes, yes. It's just a contract with UFA for our emergency manager.
Maybe that would just clarify.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any, so no clarifying questions for Mariah? Uh, we do have our public hearing on the, um, proposed budget and, uh, and the tax rate. I would entertain a motion to open up the public comment period for that.
Mayor, I motion that we open public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, we'll move into public comments, uh, on this item. If we do have any public comments, you can step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes. Have any public comments? I know you just got in here and we're throwing you on the spot.
I don't even know what you said about it, you know? I just thought I should come. My name's Diane Bjarnson and I live on seventy five hundred south, about, uh, five ninety four east. And I noticed that there was this hearing and I had forgotten about it. And then I looked at the clock and thought, oh man, I've missed it, but I thought I'd come anyway. I was just comparing my taxes like from last year to this year and, uh, noticed that it really has, it really will go up a lot. And I don't know if you know how it impacts, especially the older people like me. But, um, my taxes, when I look at the thing, it's, it's gone up about eight hundred dollars for one year. And I know that's not all for Midvale, some of it was for, uh, the Canyon School District. Um, and I think overall, um, Midvale is, is doing a good job. But I just am concerned about their rate hike. How much does it go up every year? I have no idea. So I just wanted to come and say, please don't do this to us. So anyway, I don't even know what was said about it, sorry about that.
There is one thing, the increase that they're showing there, I believe, is a higher increase. We actually put it down lower than what it shows there.
So we had noticed for about a fifteen percent increase and then since that time, we've been able to bring that down closer to just under twelve percent.
Okay.
Still an increase, but we have been able to continue to bring that number down and-
Yeah.
Um, ju, just keeping in, one, one of the big things that we've seen and Mariah just, uh, presented about this, our biggest increase this year was with law enforcement and going through the change with the unified police department. Um, that change alone is one point seven million dollars and, um, the tax increase that we're asking for is three hundred seventy six thousand dollars. So I, I don't expect anybody to be happy about it. And also I'm proud of the work that has gone into really trying to keep that a, as low as possible, doing internal cuts. And then again, even after noticing, bringing it down. But I do know it's, it's hard for a lot of people too.
Yeah, so, um, are we going to have our own police force again then, like we did before?
No, we, we have signed the new, uh, it's called an interlocal agreement with unified police department. Um, and every community that was part of unified police still is besides Salt Lake County. So that's like Mill Creek, Holiday, Magna, Kearns, and then other smaller communities.
Okay. Okay, well, hi, sorry I'm late, sorry I missed what was going on.
Just to reiterate, you did miss, uh, the average portion of the tax bill that we here are directly responsible for is about twenty six dollars per year.
Okay.
Um, in, an increase, so, you know, we did the best we could to make that as, as le, least impactful as possible. And, uh, you know, twenty six dollars a year to some people, you know, as you said, older folks on fixed incomes, you know, that can make a difference for people. But, um, you know, as the mayor said, most of that is going to emergency services and that's something that, you know, we need to provide for our residents. So twenty six dollars a year might, is not, definitely not the worst.
No, that's not the worst.
We wish it could be zero or less than zero, but.
Right, okay, well, thank you. Looks like you got a whopping crowd.
Thank you, Diane.
Well, I'm glad I showed up, so at least somebody could make a comment. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other public comments?
You've already addressed pretty much every topic.
I, I'm just gonna, you're welcome to speak, we've got, recording this online. And so I would ask that you come up to the microphone and then just please state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Steve Anderson, I live up on Thirty East. Uh, I, I came today because I was concerned as well with the fourteen point six percent increase in the Midvale tax, which honestly, as you say, is not, not an incredible increase. But as a citizen of the, of the city and, and of the state, it, it was, uh, it sparked, it sparked my interest of like, hey, what's going on? And then what, what really did, and you already addressed it in the presentation, the, the, the growth, we're, we're seeing growth in Midvale. We got duplexes coming, we got, uh, a bunch of different businesses, we're growing. And so to see that the, the growth isn't annotated on, on the budget is weird. And you see that as well as a citizen's like, okay, well, our taxes, we're raising, our, our home values have gone up in the last couple of years. So that means that the tax base is increasing as well on an average because of that. So I was curious why Midvale City specifically was raising that tax base, that, that fourteen percent or fifteen percent. But I'm glad that, uh, it, it's lower. Um, I appreciate that it, that it was relooked and it did come down. But it still raises the concern of where the RDA, the growth, where that growth factor is calculated. So that is a confusion point for myself, but overall, um, you addressed most of, uh, what my concerns were, so, thank you.
Thank you. And, and I don't know that this is what you're saying, but just as a clarification, we collect, um, regardless of tax rate, we collect the same dollar amount. Uh, so if you paid a hundred dollars to Midvale City last year, even if your home value went up or down, you're gonna pay a hundred dollars the next year unless we go through this process. So even with home prices going up, we are still collecting that same amount that we previously-
There is one thing about that though, if they reassess your house-
Right.
Then the county does charge you more taxes, okay? But if you pay more taxes, it all equals out to the city. We don't get any more every year, we get exactly the same amount except for the new growth. That's why I was asking about the new growth.
Right, and, and, and to, to tackle the whole tax on our property is, it's a major endeavor, right? So it's just, your, Midvale City is just one very small piece of that.
Yeah, we're the smallest, pretty much.
And, and, and it's hard, it's hard to put ourselves out as citizens to every entity to, to really get a feel of it. Because everywhere we look, obviously with inflation, our, uh, the prices are going up on everything. Um, I mean, I think I pay more for sewer than I do for water, which is interesting in, in Midvale. But I don't know if that's a common thing across this, the, the county. But, uh, the Midvale City or the district, what is it, the Midvale, um, what's the name of the, the organization that manages our sewer?
Mid Valley.
Mid Valley, yeah, so Mid Valley Sewer, like, it, it's interesting to me that, that I'm paying just about the same or more for sewer than, than the water. And it's just dramatically over the last three years, they put this massive height, you know, increase in our, in our sewer. And I'm just like, hmm, where, where is that coming? If we're having growth, then there should be more income coming from that growth. But that's just the naivety of myself maybe, and that's why I'm here, to learn, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right.
Mayor, move that we close public comment.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to close the public comment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, public comment is closed. I will move on to our action item for this. Consider resolution number twenty twenty four, R thirty nine, setting the rate of tax for calendar year twenty twenty four and levying taxes upon all real and personal property within the corporate boundaries of Midvale City, Utah.
I do have a question on the motion as it is written. Um, so it says calendar year twenty twenty four, it should be fiscal year twenty twenty five.
No, it's, it is to tax year, calendar year, so it, the, it is confusing, but it's not fiscal year, yep.
It's one of those things.
For once, I, wasn't my type though.
Mayor, move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four, R thirty-nine, adopting a tax rate of zero point zero 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 nine four eight for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Rory, if you would call roll, please.
Yes, Councilmember Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Gettle.
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you, uh, we've got two other action items related to the budget, uh, item A, consider resolution number twenty twenty-four, R forty, adopting the final operating and capital budgets for Midvale City, Utah for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Mariah, you were not planning to add anything else to either of these items that-
I'll redo it if you want me to, but I don't want to.
No, I, I know your plan was just to knock it all out at once, just wanted to make sure. All right, any, uh, further discussion or questions on that? I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash forty, adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget for Midvale City.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Rory, if you would call roll, please.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
And Billings.
Yes.
That passes, thank you. Action item B, consider ordinance number twenty twenty-four O twenty-one, adopting the Midvale City Job Classification Plan, Salary Plan, Elected Official Salaries and Benefits Package for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, this ordinance takes into account the employee compensation plan, the salary plan and the elected official sal-, uh, salary, excuse me, elected official salaries, that's a mouse ball, and the benefits package for twenty twenty-five. As discussed, uh, by Mariah in the presentation, the COLA for employees is three percent, the COLA for the elected officials is three point three percent based on the May CPI, and then we also have, um, the compensation salary plan for everybody that went up three percent because of the COLA, and about four market adjustments, and that's what this ordinance approves.
And we held public hearings for these in June.
Yes, these were held in June, thank you, Mariah. Any questions?
Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four O twenty-one, adopting the Midvale City Job Classification Plan, Salary Plan, Elected Officials' Salaries and Benefit Package for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Rory, if you would call roll, please.
Yes, can, excuse me, Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.